I am going to call the meeting of the December 12th meeting of the New Rochelle Public Library Board of Trustees to order. It is 7:30 PM. Welcome, everyone. I will ask that we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone. There is an attendance sheet that's going around. I think we should have it almost complete. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to start with the approval of minutes for the November 14th meeting. The minutes were shared with the board in advance, and the board had an opportunity to ask any questions, but I just want to give it a moment here if anybody had any questions or clarifications on the minutes from the November 14th meeting. No? Okay. Hearing none, I am going to make a motion for the board to approve the November 14th meeting minutes. Do I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vera Salter. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to regular business, we have our regular report from our representative from the Westchester Library System, David. Good evening.
So WLS officially approved a budget totaling just shy of $1 million, part of the approval process. WLS approved the replacement of 400 public computers with Office 2024. Member libraries to be completed at the end of the first quarter of 2025 at an approximate cost of $346,000. The Trustee Handbook Book Club was November 22nd, 5:00 to 6:00, 3:00 PM. It was online. I know people attended, but it was good, what I heard. And then Library Advocacy Day is February 5th, 2025, which is a big day. WLS sends quite a number of employees, including Terry, who's a very large advocate to our New York representatives, state legislature, and the Senate to try to advocate for funds for both for WLS, New York State Library funds. And if you guys are interested in attending, I know they have free buses that go up to Albany.
Thank you. Just one quick question, David. It's, I believe that emails have been sent out and/or will be sent out again for people to register, correct?
Yes.
For the advocacy day?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And if you missed the email or accidentally deleted it, you can just... Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for David for the report?
Yes.
Just shy of a few mil... Do you know how much it was?
It was just shy of $8 million.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
That was $7,958,900. Sure.
Thank you. Any other question? Great. Thank you, David. We'll move on to the President's Report. I will try and keep this brief. We all have in our folders our winter 2024 newsletter and for all patrons of the library that is available just outside in our lobby. And it is replete with wonderful information about our programs and what has... Any updates from the Friends, from the New Rochelle Library Foundation, and a letter from our new director? And so I would encourage everyone to read through and learn a little bit more about what's been happening at the library over these past several months. In addition, as we think about the goings-on at the library and events, thank you to all the board members who were able to attend this year's annual Thanksgiving parade. I think we had a wonderful day and got a lot of steps in walking along North Avenue from the Huguenot Children's Library into downtown. It was a really good day and a lot of good energy. So thanks for everybody who was attending to walk and those who supported us from the sidelines handing out water. And I look forward to everyone joining again. In our efforts as a board to continue to improve our practices and processes and planning for the library's future, as well as supporting Eugenia as a new director in her effort to oversee the library function and the implementation of strategic plan, we're continuing, I'm just kind of updating again to follow a process of having board agendas and minutes available online for the board to review reports and such a week before the board meeting. And so this is our second full month of doing that. And I think we're doing pretty well as we kind of move our work that way. And I thank my board members for continuing that process. And so that will be, those minutes are also on the website. So the new practice also that we're doing as we continue to refine these processes is having standing dates for our committee meetings. There are seven committees, and each one has a regular kind of consistent, has or will have a regular, consistent meeting date and time. Those will be announced, obviously, in advance for the public to be aware and to attend. And all the agendas and the minutes will be posted to the New Rochelle Public Library website. And that, and then the last item is just to say a thank you again for our board members who attended our board retreat on November 20th as we continue, again, in our efforts to refine a process and support our director in the work. And we learn and improve going forward. And we will be having a follow-up retreat on Monday, December 16th. And that is my President's Report. Any questions? Nope. Great. Thank you. Moving on to our director's reporting. You do?
Thank you. Yes. So, as Lucille already mentioned, we're trying to streamline the board packet process and improve the transparency and communication. And so we're continuing to share all board materials via Google Drive. We're committed to making this as efficient as possible, but we're also ironing out any kinks. So if you have feedback, if certain, any questions, the admin team will definitely take them into account and improve the process. It's still very early on, and we've only been doing this for about two months. And so, but it has already improved considerably the system that we have in place. So please continue to provide your feedback. One new item that you will see on the agenda today is going forward as a point of order. The personnel actions that we have are going to be listed by resolution. And so you've already seen that in the board packet. So tonight, we have our first example of a regular step increase that is being represented by a resolution. So that's a little bit new in terms of the order and the way in which we were going about things previously. I had the opportunity of marching in my first-ever Thanksgiving parade, first parade, actually, ever. And it was a lot of fun. It was a wonderful way to connect with everybody in the community. There was a palpable sense of excitement. And between the floats and the balloons and the cheering spectators, it was a wonderful experience. And I'm looking forward to representing the library going forward in events like this. Finally, I just wanted to take a moment to express our deepest gratitude to the two incredible fundraising arms of the library. So the foundation and the Friends have really given us unwavering support and play a crucial role in helping us provide our valuable services. In fact, yesterday, the Friends of the library had their annual meeting as they run on a January-to-December fiscal year. And they've generously agreed to fund $74,900 worth of programs and events for the library in the coming year. The foundation had a wonderful fundraising event last night, Cocktails and Conversation, featuring Ben Yagoda. I was there. There were a couple of trustees there as well. And we're just incredibly grateful and appreciate their hard work, commitment, and passion for the library's mission. And I wanted to make note of that as part of my verbal director's report. I also had submitted a written report, and I was open to any questions that anybody had about the written report.
I just had a minor question about the staff development that's starting in January. If you could talk a little bit about what is planned, what trainings are planned?
Yes. So as I mentioned and detailed even as early as my interview process, staff training is something that is incredibly important. It's really an investment in the staff. And new legislation passed, librarians are actually required to comply with continuing education to keep their public library certification in the state of New York. So sorely needed when announcing this initially to staff, I put forth a Google form and asked open-ended questions about what kind of training people wanted to see. Previous to that, we had had a number of department head meetings where departments were able to provide in one-on-one meetings the kind of training that each department felt would be useful to them. And I'm happy to report that within two hours, I had already had 15 responses to the survey. So people, a lot of wonderful feedback about what people wanted to see. So our initial push for the training is going to be health and life safety. So we're going to be having fire safety training, a fire drill. We're also looking to have active shooter training. And as well, there's a number of policies that are coming through the policy committee that the staff really needs more education on and then also training on procedures on how to implement the policies that we're now putting in place. So that's going to be the focus. And also, most importantly, well, not most importantly, but my favorite part, there's going to be a general staff meeting. So I was told there had been very, very few general staff meetings. It's a wonderful opportunity for me to engage with the entire staff and to talk about initiatives at the high level. And I'm really looking forward to be able to talk to the entire staff and for us all to learn and grow together. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugenia. Are there any other questions for the directors? Okay. Great. Then we will move on to committee reports. And our first committee is the Budget Committee. Rhiannon?
Yep. The Budget Committee will have their first meeting on January 10th at 2:00 PM. And the meeting details and the agenda will be posted online ahead of time.
Great. Thank you. And perfect timing. The Buildings and Grounds Committee. Cory, hold on.
Thank you. I'll do our meeting summary first, our report out, and then we have a resolution to have approved. So Building and Grounds Committee met, and the key points that we discussed, the financial outlook and budget, financial assessment for buildings and grounds is underway as we look to work with the Finance Committee on having an accounting firm to give us more financial clarity on how we can budget certain items or do certain projects within the library. We discussed DASNY grant implementation and RFP. We discussed how we do these RFPs and grants while working with the foundation, looking to have a construction manager that can actually manage these RFPs as we do work at the Buildings and Grounds for the library and obviously for the Huguenot Library as well. The follow-up meeting is scheduled to finalize project management details. We also discussed change orders and the financial implications of those change orders. So what we found was that when we go into these projects and there are change orders, the library traditionally has been picked up, has been picking up those additional costs. And so we do need to figure out a way, when we go for these grants, how do we handle change orders? So that's something that we're looking at to get clarity on because we've been the ones picking up the additional costs if the scope is incorrect or anything to that effect. Speaking to that, project management and grant challenges, we identified the need for better project management and communications. Right now, our executive director has been playing a role of executive director and project manager, which is above and beyond her scope. And we're aware of that. So we're trying to find a solution for that. In addition, the new executive director from the foundation, Nina, should hopefully enhance the process of this and make it a lot easier. We're committed to reviewing project budgets and documenting all additional work so we can get a handle on that. We're also looking at architectural firm proposals and state grants, specifically the initial courtyard design proposal, which $36,000, lacked the detailed plans as well as the construction aspect of it. So the $36,000 design proposal, but that's as far as we got. Today, there's more work to do in terms of budgeting and figuring out how to actually do the work on the proposal we had for the outside of the library. Sorry. Let's see. Project prioritization and funding. We also look at air handler replacement and garden project prioritization, exploring potential Department of Environmental Conservation grants, adjustments to RFPs for our homestead project. We discuss next steps where Eugenia, executive director, will email Buildings and Grounds Committee about planned foundation work, follow up with elected officials on DASNY funding and potential reallocation for critical infrastructure. Eugenia and Rhiannon scheduled to meet in January with Assemblyman Steve Otis in reference to HVAC funding. And myself will look at the air handler issue and RFP approval for the homestead project to the next board meeting, until the next board meeting agenda. That is the report out for Buildings and Grounds. And this is the resolution, which I'll read. Resolution number 2024-121203, date 12/12/24. Topic: Award of Huguenot Children's Library Bathroom Renovation Project. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the New Rochelle Public Library hereby enmines its proceedings and ratifies at the following. To award the contract for the renovation of the Huguenot Children's Library to Homestead Remodeling, following a competitive RFP process, the contract shall be awarded for an amount not to exceed $67,400 in accordance with the terms outlined in the proposal. Motion made by... Yeah. I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to have this accepted. This resolution accepted? And can I have a second?
Do I have a second?
Before we got to that...
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to stress that there are some adjustments we want. There's some adjustments that we want to have made to the original proposal. And we just want to be sure that the term "not to exceed" will allow the company to come back with their specific proposal. Does that make sense?
Do we have any, were there any questions? Thank you, Vera. Is there a second?
I'll second. Everybody second.
Okay. So second by Vera Salter. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cory. Community Relations Committee, Nancy.
The Community Relations Committee met to discuss what the mission of our committee really is with changing roles of the different committees. And we, and with Eugenia's guidance, we have decided to focus on advocacy and outreach. One of the things that we discussed was the importance of attending the, as David mentioned, the Advocacy Day in Albany. And busing is available through WLS. Some of the other things were to just to sign up to be an advocate on the New York Library Association website. We discussed reaching out to local leaders for different projects and to do outward advocacy, which is to contact local officials and our allies, not only just to ask for things, but just to touch base and establish relationships and see how things are going, which is we all decided to make a pledge to try to do that over the next few months. We discussed Spanish-speaking resources at the library and strategies for improving them, as well as strategies to outreach to senior centers and create progress for homebound seniors. And that's pretty much what we did. And so we also wanted to create a comprehensive calendar of all city events. So when we plan things for the library, it's in line with what else is going on in the city. And we are going to meet again in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any questions for Nancy? Great. Thanks. I would just encourage everyone to, if there is, if you do have time and you are able to commit a day. I know a day can be a lot if you have a lot going on. The Day of Advocacy in February is even more important now for libraries. So if you're able to make that time, it would be great for us to do that.
February 5th. I have an email prepared. I can resend the link along with the registration for WLS.
That would be great. Thank you. The next is the Finance, Treasury, and Audit Committee. Vera?
The committee met on November 25th, and the full report is in the board packet online. The most significant item is that we are beginning the process of hiring an independent treasurer together with the Personnel Committee. And we have reviewed a job description for that treasurer, which we believe is a very important position for the board to fulfill its responsibility or our responsibility, our fiduciary responsibility to the community.
Thank you, Vera. Are there any questions? Thank you, Vera. The Personnel Committee, that is me. As Vera said, the Personnel Committee will be working with the Finance, Treasury, and Audit Committee with regard to bringing on a treasurer. And I will talk more about that in a minute when I do the Personnel Committee report. But following up on Eugenia's update regarding personnel, I wanted to bring forward information about a step salary increase for a staff member, and then we'll make a motion for approval. Dana Peters, who is a full-time library clerk in the Tech Services Department, is moving from a Step 1 salary of $45,149 to a Step 2 salary of $46,609. And that's effective as of November 16th, 2024. So as Eugenia mentioned, and as I'm reading, this is a process that we will be doing when there are salary increases. So it's, there's full awareness and transparency, and we can make a motion for approval. So with that, I am making a motion for the board to approve the salary increase from Step 1, $45,149, to Step 2, $46,609 for full-time library clerk Dana Peters in the Tech Services Department. Can I get a second? Seconded by Tatiana. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Motion passes. Thank you. The Personnel Committee report. The committee met on November 27th and discussed a number of items and areas, including the roles and responsibilities of the committee, as well as the roles of the responsibilities of the director as related to the Personnel Committee, discussed the hiring process for the library, current open positions, possible, potential upcoming retirements, and the importance of all employees being hired through the civil service and ensuring that this applies to all employees and the processes and procedures to make sure that we're compliant. And we discussed, again, the importance of hiring a treasurer and that capacity for the library's continued financial due diligence and for ours as a board to the community. The committee also discussed staff development trainings, which are a necessary and important part of the continued internal professional development for the library staff. And this includes, as Eugenia mentioned, fire drill training, active shooter training, and a number of other professional development trainings. Providing this training does require time for the staff to meet. And the committee discussed with Eugenia holding time for these trainings one Wednesday morning per month. And this would have the library open a bit later to the public, starting around noon. So to enable this, as Chair of the Personnel Committee, I would like to have a resolution for the board to approve the monthly late opening schedule for professional development in 2025 and going forward. So I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion. The resolution to approve new library hours. Whereas the library board recognizes the need for committed staff development time and trainings for continued professional development for the New Rochelle Public Library staff and to comply with New York State standards. And whereas the library has not previously had an opportunity to have such dedicated time for consistent monthly staff development. And whereas the library director has presented a proposed schedule to hold one Wednesday morning per month for staff development training. And whereas such dedicated training requires delaying the library opening to noon to hold these monthly staff development trainings, be it resolved that the New Rochelle Public Library Board of Trustees hereby approves the implementation of the new opening of 12:00 noon one Wednesday per month, effective January 15th, 2025, as outlined in the library director's proposal. I'm making a motion. Do I get a second? Seconded by Cory. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Well...
No, it's just, I'm just about the delayed opening.
Okay.
It doesn't affect the resolution?
Okay.
Is it always the same Wednesday every month?
No.
So how are the delayed hours communicated to the public? Because that becomes a little...
There'll be a schedule in advance.
So like outside, where the hours are posted?
You're saying where it would, where would it be?
Yeah. How is it, how is the delays? Like if it's not the same Wednesday every month, then how a patron come into the door? How will they know this is the Wednesday? What tomorrow, it says is the Wednesday where we're going to open later?
Right. Okay. Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, so I can answer that.
Okay.
So I want to start by saying we strategically chose Wednesdays because that's already our late opening day so that it minimizes the impact on residents. Also, the reason that we want the date to rotate is because we have different staff schedule weeks. So we are on an A and B week schedule. So if we do it the same week every single month, you're going to miss half the staff. So we're going to alternate it. So we have a very diligent marketing team that is ready, as a result of this public vote, to put out the dates for the first quarter of the year. That would, of course, be on our website, go in our e-newsletter, and we would make signs within the building.
I should have asked for questions before making the motion, but it's a little in reverse, but hold on.
Correct? And would have a later opening?
Correct. Yes. So they would have a later opening as well. Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Are there any additional questions? Sorry, thank you. Thank you, Eugenia. We are moving on to the Policy Committee. Falah.
Do you want me to try to? Thank you. No, I'm glad, thank you. The Policy Committee met on November 22nd and also December 6th. For the near future, the Policy Committee decided that we will be meeting twice a month. This, during these two meetings, we worked on several policies. And this evening, we'll be introducing the motions for three of those policies. I would definitely like to thank the Policy Committee for all of the work that we did. It was a lot. And I would also like to welcome the Special Projects Committee members who joined the Policy Committee to assist, including the Special Projects Committee Chair, Tatiana Infante, and Special Projects Committee Member Vera Salter. Thank you both for joining. The policy discovery is ongoing and continues. And in our meetings, we discussed the differences between policies and procedures, internal and external. And we also, well, again, we discussed several policies, of which I'm going to start making, introducing the three motions. So this evening, I'd like to introduce three motions for the Board of Trustees to approve these three policies. All of these have been reviewed by the Board of Trustees and have been available online. The first is, I would like to introduce the motion for the board to adopt the revision of the library's collection, development, and maintenance policy, which is posted online. Are there any questions about this policy? Yes.
You have three policies?
Yes.
And I'm asking from a Robert Rose point of view. Can she just list all three policies and we make one motion? She cannot.
Thank you for asking, though. That would have been great. I would have liked that, actually. So thank you.
Okay, okay. I should ask for questions. Are there any questions?
Okay. So I would like to make a motion. Appointed procedure.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Sorry, go ahead, Falah.
Okay.
Just getting clarity, but.
Okay, so I'm going to make the motion for the first policy.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion for the Board of Trustees to adopt the revised collection, development, and maintenance policy.
Can I get a second? Tatiana is seconding. And all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a discussion? Were there questions? There were not. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Collection policy passes.
Thank you. Second, I would like to introduce the motion for the board to adopt the revision of the library's reconsideration of library resources policy. Are there any questions about that policy, which was available to the board?
Any questions or discussion about the, the, I'm sorry, it's the reconsideration policy? Or clarifications with regard to the policy? Okay. And are you, you making the motion?
So now I would like to make the motion, the formal motion, for the Board of Trustees to adopt the reconsideration of library resources policy.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Rhiannon. All in favor? Rhiannon is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, and the final policy, thank you very much. The third policy, third, I would like to introduce the motion for the board to adopt a new policy, which is an internal policy, the credit card policy. Were there any questions or any?
Questions or discussions or clarification with regard to the credit card policy?
Okay, I will formally make the motion. May I proceed?
Yes, please, thank you.
I would like to make a motion for the Board of Trustees to adopt the credit card policy.
Can I get a second? Seconded by Nancy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Great, good policy.
Thank you all. We will be moving. We, our next meeting will be in early January. And as I mentioned before, we will be continuing to have our two meetings a month for the foreseeable future. And we'll be introducing policy and also reviewing the policies that need updating.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Falah. And thank you for your work. Thank you to the committee for the work.
A lot of work. Lot of work.
Special Projects Committee, Tatiana.
For the President request, the Special Project Committee will be meeting twice a month with the Policy Committee.
Thank you. Thank you. And the purpose of that is to, there are a number of policies that have to either be revised, have to be developed, that are really important to the functioning and the running of the library. It takes a lot more work than the the current number of people on the Policy Committee. Therefore, it's it's helpful for for the support of the Special Projects Committee. And part of the reason why we have the Special Projects Committee is to work on projects as they arise. So thank you again to Tatiana for for joining and spearheading that joint effort and to Falah for chairing the Policy Committee and moving that work forward. We've now come to the part of our meeting for, well, let me pause for a second. Were there any questions for Tatiana with regard to the special policy? The Special Projects Committee? Great. Yes, Cory.
So Tatiana, your group will obviously offset some of the heavy lifting from FALA, I guess, right?
Correct.
That's all, all right.
Thank you. Any other questions? Wonderful. So we have now come to the part of our meeting for public discussion. And there's no public present with any requests to speak. Therefore, I will make a motion for us to adjourn this meeting at 8:08 P. M. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Cory. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all. The meeting is adjourned.